Two, one.
All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Long Meadow Select Board Regular Meeting, July 18th, 2022. I'm required to announce that if anybody is audio or video recording this meeting, you announce it to everyone present, and we are recording on LCTV. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'll start with our announcements. Connecticut River Valley drought status update, Level Two Significant Drought. Did you know that our region is in a Level Two drought? To protect our water supply, local habitats, and ecosystems, we encourage you to implement indoor and outdoor water-saving measures. For some great tips on conserving water both indoors and outdoors, please visit the Department of Public Works Water Conservation page. To check your drought region and status, please go to mass.gov/ma-drought-management. Free home COVID test pickup. Now, while supplies last, the Long Meadow Board of Health is happy to distribute free COVID test kits to residents. You may pick up your kits at Long Meadow Town Hall, first floor Board of Health office from 8:15 to 4:15 Monday through Thursday, and 8:15 to noon on Fridays. Building and zoning complaint process. The town has updated our building and zoning complaint process as of July 1st. To submit a request for enforcement, you must now submit the Request for Building-Zoning Code Enforcement Form to the Building Department. Hard copies are also available at the Building Department office. Please visit www-longmeadow.org/civicalerts for additional information. I would now like to present a certificate of congratulations to the 2022 Long Meadow High School Boys Lacrosse Team. And I'll read our recognition. Town of Long Meadow, certificate of congratulations presented to the 2022 Long Meadow High School Boys Lacrosse Team in recognition of their achievement in winning the Division II Massachusetts State Championship on June 21st, 2022, given with our hands on behalf of the Town of Long Meadow Select Board this 18th day of July in the year 2022. And I understand we have representatives from the team.
Congratulations.
Appreciate it.
The town's very proud of you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you having us. Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
Good job.
All right, we've got a packed house. Move right on to board and committee interviews. First up, we have... My confirmed is people we know are coming?
Yep, some people confirmed.
Okay. All right, for the Conservation Commission, a three-year term expiring June 30th, 2025, and there's also an associate term expiring next year. Is Kimberly Barton here? Please come up. Have a seat right there. You can introduce yourself. Say your name and address, please.
Kimberly Barton, 721.
Okay, and have you been on any boards in town before?
I have been on this board.
Oh, I'm sorry.
This is a reappointment for the commission, the associate position.
Okay, and how long have you been on the board?
Six months.
Okay, and have you been enjoying your time on the board so far?
Oh, yeah, yeah. It's been very interesting. I've been learning quite a bit.
And what interests you about the Conservation Commission?
Most of all, the protection of the wetlands and the efforts that have been made to that effect with prevention of cutting unnecessary trees and preventing the trash buildup and so forth, and water pollution. That affects the environment. And also, it's been interesting looking into the possibilities of how we might improve our use of the meadows, the Fannie Stebbins Conservation Area.
Any thoughts to, if solar goes down, not on the meadows so much, but in the area? Has there been any discussion over how that will affect the wetlands? Like the old DPW site has some solar?
No, I haven't heard anything to that effect, actually. Apologies. It hasn't come up in our meetings. I mean, we're usually pretty busy with scheduled NOIs or RTAs.
Sorry for starting a rumor then.
No, there are lots of things I probably just didn't know about it.
Any questions from the board? All right. Thank you for your interest in serving, for continuing to serve for the town.
Okay, that's all.
Yeah, any questions for us?
Not at all, no.
Okay.
I'd like to continue.
Well, consider, and we'll vote at a later meeting. Thank you. All right, next up, we have Constance Ryder. No, okay, for the Historical Commission. Okay, yeah, Mike Calick. For a three-year term on the Historical Commission, expiring in 2025. If I could state your name and address for the record.
Okay. My name is Michael Calick. I live at 458 Williams Street in town.
Okay, oh, go ahead, Mark.
Mike, were you planning to stick around for a discussion we're going to be having about certified local government?
Sure.
Do you know anything about it?
No.
Maybe Corinne does, but, okay, because there's a proposal that for becoming certified local government has to do with the Historic Commission and Historic District Commission. I just was going to try to get the opinion of the members of the commissions.
I know, I don't, I've never been to a Historical Commission meeting. I responded to an ad in the Hampton County Bar Association. They were looking for a lawyer, I guess, and I'm a lawyer, and I thought it would be a good experience. I've lived in town, I don't know, 25 years. I've been moderator of the town meeting, as many of you might, some of you might know. And, but the Historic District, the Historic Commission sounds like a good committee to be on, given the nature of Long Meadow and the fine history that it has, so that's why I responded.
Thank you.
Have you talked to anybody who's on the Historical Commission?
I haven't.
Always a good idea to do, just to get a handle on what they're tackling. Any other questions from other members?
Thank you for stepping forward.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, moving on to the Historical District Commission, a three-year term expiring 2025. First up, we have Jane Crosby. Jane, if you could introduce yourself and state your address for the record.
Sure, my name's Jane Crosby. I live at 73 Lincoln Park here in town.
Okay, is this a new position or a reappointment?
A new position. I've never sat on a town board before.
Okay, and what got you interested in the Historic District Commission?
Actually, like Mike, there was an ad in the Hampton County Bar Association indicating that the Historical Commission, and I think the Historic District Commission, were looking for someone who was an attorney. And I've lived in this town for, I first came here in 1988, and with the exception of a nine-month period when my husband and I were between houses, I've lived here ever since. And I grew up in New England. I'm a 10th-generation New Englander, and I grew up in a family that really was very concerned about preserving the historic nature of the towns that we live in.
And you're in Lincoln Park. Are you in a, you're not in the Historic District, correct?
I am not. No, but I walk to it every day.
Okay, and have you talked to the Historic District Commission, anybody on the commission?
I have not.
Okay. Well, I must have missed this ad in the Bar Association email, but I'm glad it's working.
Well, it's possible that I confused it with the position that Mike has. I think I may have ticked both boxes.
You did.
I did, so there you go.
That's great. Yeah, so any other questions from the rest of the board?
So, you walk through the Historical District quite a bit. Is there something particular that draws you to Historic District Commission? Like that you say, this is something I think really needs to be preserved? Or is there something that needs to be added, or?
So, one of the things that I found very interesting is there's a, I mean, first of all, it's a beautiful walk. You know, I walk down Long Meadow Street, I go up the hill, and then I usually walk around the green, often walk on the green. And I love the architecture, and I also love the history of that district. I think it's, I think the, one of the commissions, there's an email that you can subscribe to is, you know, like, and it gives you information about the history of Long Meadow. And there have been some emails recently, or maybe it's on Facebook, I forget, where they show photographs and they compare like what it was like and what it is now. And I thought it was really fascinating that, just the character of the green itself, that at one point it was actually, it really was the business district, and then a decision was made to move all the businesses off the green in that entire process. And the fact that the trolleys actually ran right down the center of the green at one point in time. And I just, I just think that that's fascinating. And I'd like to see, I think that, I think it's, our green is really special, and I think it's something that needs to be preserved, and I think it's something that everyone can take advantage of. But I'm sure that the Historic District Commission doesn't just deal with the green, but it's just the general area.
You'll find out when you talk to the members.
I will.
All right, well, thank you very much. We appreciate your interest.
Thank you.
All right, next up is Heather Heave here. How about Joe Pacella? Clifford Scott? Okay, you can state your name and address.
Good evening, Cliff Scott, 797 Long Meadow Street.
Okay, and are you a new applicant?
Reappointment.
Okay, how long you been on the board?
A three-year term.
Okay, so that was your first term. Did you find, enjoyed the work?
I do enjoy the work. I think it's good work, and it's interesting to get, you know, plugged into things that are happening around town, even beyond the Historic District business, and how it interacts with other boards and other happenings within the town.
And do you know anything about Historic, or the, I forgot what it's called already? Certified Local Government?
Certified Local Government. I know, you know, this much, basically. I understand conceptually what it's about.
Stick around, we'll all learn together, I think. I read a PowerPoint, so we're probably on the same.
I've heard, I've heard of all the benefits of it. I haven't heard of any of the pitfalls yet, so I'm sure there's, I'm sure there's more to it than what I know, but it sounds to me like it's a, it's a, it's a, the benefits are good, and I think, I think we could, you know, realize and use some of those benefits from a Historic District Commission perspective.
Okay, go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, Mr. Scott, thanks again for your work with the commission. This past year, for the first time, we had an issue with what I call, I guess, a non-compliance in the Historic District Commission, and just kind of wanted to know your thoughts about, as a resident who lives in there and this house is part of the Historic District, how that works and how we deal with it there.
Well, I think the procedures that we have written are kind of clear, are clear-cut, and they make sense. Sometimes, you know, real life runs up against clear-cut procedures, and I think in this particular case, I think it was primarily just a communication issue. And, you know, you hate to see things go south just because there was a communication issue as opposed to a real hard problem that needed to be resolved. It seemed like it was pretty clear that fixing the communication issue was going to fix the problem, and that we didn't need to go down the, you know, hard path of the procedures because that would not have been beneficial to anybody involved.
Anything else from the board? All right, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
And is Ann Slick here? Have a seat.
Hi, I'm Ann Slick. I live at 22 Inglewood in town.
Go ahead, it sounded like you wanted to keep talking, or do you want a question?
No, I remember you saying, you say your name and where you live, and then there was something else.
So, what got you interested in the Historic District Commission?
Actually, I'm a registered architect. I practice in Springfield. I work for the dentist group, and so I got an email through the head of the Western Massachusetts American Institute of Architects saying that the Historic District Commission in Long Meadow needed a registered architect on the committee, and knew, this person, Lauren, knew that I lived in town, so reached out to me, asking if I would be interested. And I, our house is on the corner of Long Meadow Street, not in Historic, but, you know, right at Inglewood, so it's an old house, it's not historic, but I figured, sure. So, I asked him some questions and talked to Ryan Shanks, and seems like it's something that I could do, you know, just with my knowledge as an architect, maybe like a, you know, I have a different, maybe, perspective than some people.
Has anyone talked to you about the Permanent Building Committee?
I don't know what that is, but, I mean, I do work full-time and have two kids, so, no, I can't work for the town, but, you know.
It's another committee. It's also.
At night, you know, there's a couple of things I can do, but yeah, yeah, I'm happy to help out, you know, my civic duty, and, you know, as my licensure, you know, I should be helping my community, so.
The Permanent Building Committee is, deals with our town buildings, and is also looking for an architect, and an HVAC expert. Go ahead, Mark.
Anyway, that's my background then.
Great, I was going to thank you for applying, and just comment to this board that the Historic District Commission does have specifics, specific requirements of membership, people live in the district, and I know that there's.
Yeah, I mean, that's why Lauren shouts me, so.
Right, we're looking for an architect specifically, so appreciate you stepping forward.
Honestly, I don't really care which committee I'm on, you know, if you need my help, I'm happy to help out.
We need your help in a lot of places, but we have to have your help here.
Anyway, I'm an architect living in town.
Watch out.
So, anyway, that's it.
Yeah, well, that's great. We appreciate you applying. Anybody else?
No, but Mary Beth Bergeron is the chair of the Permanent Building Committee, and she would love to talk to you at some point. You know, if you'd be interested, I don't know what the time commitment would be for, to be on two committees at the same time, but hopefully it wouldn't be enough.
The Permanent Building Committee may have some interesting things coming up.
Okay, yeah, just, I mean.
But thank you for volunteering.
He also might not like my work, I don't know.
Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, for Parks and Rec Commission, Daniel Burns.
My name's Daniel Burns. I live at 39 Van Gardland.
Okay, and is this a new commission or a reappointment?
It's a new commission. I've not done anything in town prior. I was on the Cultural Council in my last town I lived in before I moved here in 2020.
Okay, where'd you move from?
Templeton.
And so you're pretty near to town?
Yep. So, we moved in right before the COVID shutdown. So, we spent a lot of times in the parks because that was the only thing available.
That's, that makes sense. So, what brought you, so being in the parks got you interested in the commission?
I'm in the parks, we have a lot of beautiful parks in town.
Sure.
I see a lot of things in the air as far as the skate park, which I thought was a great idea, but also ice skating, and a lot of interesting things that we really should as a community have. I'd like to be able to help, you know, in the town I live in.
Okay, so it sounds like you've got some ideas. Have you talked to other members of the board?
I've not, I mean, there's some stuff online, in like the Long Meadow forums and things of that nature, but nothing, you know, one-on-one or that nature.
Okay. It's worth having a conversation with them. I know that they had a very busy year last year. There's always, we've got a lot of things going on in the Parks and Rec side, so, yeah, it'd be good to have a conversation.
Now that they're coming out of COVID, things are becoming more, you know, in-person, and being able to see each other and talk with each other, and it's different now.
Absolutely. Go ahead, Mark.
Mr. Burns, thank you for applying. I guess my question is really, is there an area that you are most, or are kind of focused on? I'll lead the witness here, that we have people come along and say, my kids play lacrosse, so I'm interested in my kids, you know, and I don't want, I'm curious if there's.
So, I have a 21-year-old and a 14-year-old. The 21-year-old obviously is going to do his own thing, the 14-year-old runs cross-country, and only because we're making him, quite frankly. So, there's not really a horse in the race regarding, I want a lacrosse team, or I want a bocce league. There's nothing like that.
Thank you.
Not a bad idea.
Just throwing them out there.
That's the one thing we don't have, but keep it up, we'll have one.
Anybody else?
I'll go real quick.
Go ahead.
Really appreciate you stepping up. You mentioned, so you've been around town through the parks, and just curious what, some areas of, you know, disrepair you see, or there?
Well, everybody looks at this park, because that's like on the corner, and to me, that's like very much overdeveloped. Like, you cannot do anything more with that without, you know, ruining what's already there. If you go to, I'm drawing a blank on the other name of the park, the one, the middle school, not Williams, drawing a blank, I apologize.
Glenbrook?
Glenbrook, yes. That's very much an undeveloped area, like you have basically four baseball diamonds there, and that's it. And you go further down to Turner's, you have a couple softball pitches, I mean, there's a lot of stuff that's not being utilized, really, it's just open space.
You can figure out where to put a dog park. You're on man.
A dog park would be great in a central area, but, you know, the only available spaces we have for that are well off.
Like I said, if you can figure it out.
All right, well, thank you very much. Appreciate you coming in. Next up, we have a Recycling Commission, we have three three-year terms and a one-year associate non-voting term. And Susan Shepherd here.
I guess I get to take this off. I'm Susan Shepherd. I live at 58 Emerson Road.
Is this a new appointment, or are you already on the board?
I've been on the board for the past year.
Okay, great. Were you an associate member?
I'm not quite clear. I guess I am, I mean, it's just been a year, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
And what brought you to the Recycling Commission?
Well, I'm interested in recycling, reusing, you know, all those kinds of things, and I think the projects they've done, the litter cleanup, the shredding, and just working at the swap shop and trying to figure out what goes on down there is, you know, are all important.
I just realized, our public hearing's in a minute.
I also don't see, well, maybe we probably should vote on it anyway, right? Vote enter about the applicant being here. Mark Twiely.
Probably should, yeah.
We can get through her, Kathy can Kevin one minute.
Sorry.
That's okay.
And so, I think, we had an applicant a couple weeks ago, we were talking about, Tom, is that right? Was that you asking about?
Recycling food?
Recycling food.
Compost. Composting.
Any thoughts on that?
I think it's a great idea. I don't know if it's being looked into implementing at all. I know Irwin and Arlene are very involved and have a long history of experience, so it'd be a good idea. They're working with materials right now, textiles, and trying to get that out of the dump.
Okay, great, sounds like a worthy project. Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for coming in.
I have a commitment shortly. Is it okay if I go?
Oh, sure. Yeah, we'll vote in a later meeting.
That's what I thought, okay.
Anyone's free to leave if they want, we love an audience, but.
By bylaws, we can't vote for a minimum of seven days on appointments, so generally we wait till the next meeting to do that.
Great, thank you, thank you very much.
Kathy Kukap, quickly, she's a reappointment, I'll go two seconds.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Kathy Kukap for the Tree Commitment, or Tree Committee?
I think you just said it all. Kathy Kukap, 5 Summit Avenue. I'm a reappointment, I hope I'll be a reappointment to the Tree Committee.
Just have a quick question. There's buzzing like a fire alarm out here. It's not very loud, is it something that's just hooked up, or?
It's been going on since.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. It's an exciting meeting.
So far, I've enjoyed, I enjoyed the first term. It was very interesting, and I participated in a lot of the programs. What else would you like to hear?
Any questions?
We have lots of trees.
We do.
We've had a lot of problems with them going down a few years back, but this was a good year for us. We haven't had too many bad storms yet. Yeah, everybody.
We had a couple go down last week. All microbursts. Anyway, Kathy, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate you coming in. All right. Mike, a second.
Public hearing, the agenda didn't have a time for the public hearing.
Ah, the notice has it, I believe.
Thank you.
Minor was at 7:30, so I just assumed. All right, if we could have a motion to enter the public hearing?
So, move.
Second.
Any discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll have a public hearing now for Oxbow Wines LLC doing business as provisions. Okay, introduce yourself, please.
My name is Benson Hyde. I'm one of the owners or principals of Oxbow Wines LLC, VBA provisions. Yeah, we have a store in North Hampton, one in Amherst, and we're hoping to have one here in Long Meadow.
Okay, have you had any disciplinary issues at any of the stores?
We, maybe eight or nine years ago, shortly after we opened, we had an employee involved in an undercover sting, but no real disciplinary, and we, you know.
I'd consider that a disciplinary.
Well, yeah, yeah.
Have you, so what kind of training do you provide your employees to avoid things like that?
We had basically all of our managers go through the tips and.
Safe serve.
Safe serve, thank you. So, that's, you know, in order to be a manager, you, a manager on duty, you have to qualify for that. And at the time, we ran all, pretty much all our employees through it, just as best practices.
Do you have your, the proposed manager of record here with you today? Andy, have you had, can you come up as well? Everyone could just silence their cell phone.
No one ever called. It said spam.
All right, Andy, have you worked as a manager of record at a liquor, beer, wine establishment before?
Yes, sir. So, I'm currently the manager of the North Hampton location, and if all goes according to plan, I'll be transferring and being the store manager of the Long Meadow location.
Great, and any, any stings under you while you're in North Hampton? So, we take it very seriously in Long Meadow. We had an incident last year and it gave a suspension, and it's the last thing you would ever want, so we take it very seriously, so of course, yeah, recommend that you continue on, keep everyone tips trained, card everyone.
Yeah, the other thing that we've done is the, oh, this is under Andy's management, but we have the readers, the.
Card readers, so nobody, nobody has to do math. A card reader will tell you the age.
Yeah, and whether it's expired, et cetera, so it's, makes it so much. Yeah, and whether it's expired, et cetera. So it's, makes it so much easier. I, for one, struggle with the math sometimes. What date is it?
Okay, Mark?
Thank, thank you for coming by. I, I'm just going to reiterate a little bit of what our chairman said about Town of Long Meadow. We welcome new businesses to Town of Long Meadow and wish you the greatest of success, but want to let you know that we take liquor licenses extraordinarily seriously. I will guarantee you that there will be a compliance check at your establishment at least once a year, if not more frequently. And I hope we never see you back here again, as you do. But I did want to do that. I did not see on the application, maybe I just missed it, the safe server tips certification. Generally, that's been provided to us, and so I just hope that, you know, since it sounds like you're already, you've already got it. It just needs to be something that gets submitted to us.
Yep, we can pass those along. We have documentation of all that.
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, it's pretty straightforward. I guess my question for you, Mr. Hyde, is, is what is it exact? I was trying to read through this and understand, what is it exactly that your, your store is going to be selling?
So we focus primarily on fine wine, craft beer, and cut-to-order cheese counter. So it's basically, you know, you, all the cheeses are whole wheels, and you can go up and taste through things. But it's sort of, it's more of a full-service cheese counter.
But there's no packaged foods per se, or?
We'll have some packaged foods, but it's mostly in that sort of higher-end gourmet.
Oh, okay.
Side of things, and geared towards charcuterie and cheese boards and whatnot.
Thank you.
I do a lot of, as an attorney, I do a lot of liquor licensing, so I will now be very nitpicky. Do you have a floor plan of the actual store? And to get a floor plan of the whole?
We have, it's not finalized, and I don't know if we've passed, run it.
Yeah, it was just the exhibit A, the building scope, but we have not got the floor plan.
So in my experience, this will get kicked back by the state without a floor plan. They do sometimes come to check to make sure it's been built out as it was. For new license, it's pretty particular.
It's, it's pretty darn close. You know, there are a couple things that might shift around based on, like, we haven't finalized which wine racks we're going to use, and that can change.
All they want, you can, you can draw it yourself.
Oh, just the outline?
A square showing this is a wine rack, this is a cooler.
Yeah.
And that, that'll be it.
Yeah.
I just don't want you to get kicked back all these...
No, I appreciate that. Yeah, the less...
And also, none of this is signed?
We got that fixed.
Okay. Definitely get you kicked back.
Yeah, we got that fixed.
Yeah.
Okay, that's great. And what are your hours going to be? There's some hours requirements that are dictated in the lease agreement.
Oh, what they're asking for.
We haven't finalized full hours yet, but in the lease agreement, there's some expectation of being open at a certain time and then, and then being open until a certain time.
Okay.
But again, staffing may have some influence over that. How many people are you planning on having in the store? As far as staff? Yes. At a given time, we're expecting three, but again, that could be something.
Three to five, three on a, you know, like on a Monday, and then, you know, more for busy times.
Okay. Fortunately, it's difficult to predict. Once, once we have a baseline of, of sales, that it makes it much easier to project payroll. But hopefully, it goes according to plan. And do you plan on, I know in your other stores, you have events with tasting. Are you planning on doing anything like that in the store?
Likely, we'll do some of the, you know, we do Friday, Saturday tastings. And likely, we will be doing that down here. We've done bigger events. We've found that it's basically, we don't, we don't have the space to do that. We have been doing some in Amherst because we have a big space.
Just a question. So this isn't just a packaged sale of beer and wine. This is also going to be serving?
No. No, so tastings are little tasting pours.
And that does not, that doesn't count?
It's allowed with the license.
Oh, okay.
Go ahead. There is a, there's a state regulation on a maximum of volume for each category of alcohol that you are allowed to sample out.
One ounce per customer, I think, right?
I believe...
It's very small.
For, for wine, yeah.
For wine, I believe it's one ounce per item sampled.
Total, yeah.
And then there's a maximum, a number of ounces that a customer is allowed to be served. And again, all our vendors, if their companies aren't giving them that information, then of course, we follow up with them when they arrive. Any other questions? Tom?
Well, I was just wondering about the, the distance from the school. Are we going to discuss that? Is that?
We are. That's on, that's on the agenda. It's within 500 feet, I believe. We need, we need, I'm sorry, we need to make a finding?
Yes.
Okay.
Just a separate vote when you take it.
Not detrimental to the educational and spiritual activities of the school or the church.
Right. Because we have other folks, like we just, it wasn't that long ago that we did the Delaney House that they sell wine and beer. And I don't remember them having this coming up.
Wasn't here for that, but you have to have a section 16C.
So, so the distance, because I don't know if, if it, if it affects the whole ground floor or just the location within the plaza?
It's within 500 feet.
Pardon?
Within 500 feet.
Okay, so if they were, at one end, they might be within 500 feet, but the other end, they would not.
The schools were included in the abutters notification.
Okay.
So we would need to do a section 16C.
The question is, as the tenant, have you gone and looked at your proximity to Blueberry Hill Elementary School and Long Meadow High School?
I haven't.
It doesn't matter. The law requires any church, school, synagogue, or hospital within 500 feet of a proposed liquor license, you have a special 16C finding that placement of that license at that property has no detriment to the activities happening in a church, school, synagogue, or hospital. You just have to take a separate vote on that.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we would be right next to Max Burger, which serves alcohol.
So the, the question of detriment, you know, is like you have, you know, Postos and then Max Burger, and then you'd have these folks, and then you have Delaney House, and then you have the Asian, and that's an awful lot of liquor being sold in a short space.
It is, but we'd, we'd have to make a, we'd have to make a finding.
Well, we'd have to make a finding if we approved them, according to that.
A finding why we deny it, because it could be appealed. We need to make a finding if we, why we deny it.
Right, so the, the finding would just be that it is within 500, it's within the distance, within 500 feet of a school or church. That would be the reason.
No, that's, that is, that's the case, but we need to say why it's detrimental. If that's what you, if that's the way it was going.
So you read this, that they, it says they should not be licensed for alcohol beverages if they're within the 500 feet. That's what it says. That's what I read. And so I'm seeing a propensity of alcoholic services in the same area, and this is actually a duplication of the Delaney House, as far as I'm concerned.
Well, you can't deny a license based on competition.
No, but it's still, it's within 500 feet of a school, and shall not be licensed for the sale of alcohol.
Unless the local licensing authority determines in writing after a hearing that the premises is not detrimental to the educational and spiritual activities of the school.
That's after unless is a whole nother section. So, you know, so I'm just saying, we have to decide as a board how many alcoholic establishments we're going to have in a specific plaza that are pretty much duplicates of other established places and, you know. And so for me, I guess I, I would not support this, you know, at this point. I don't see the need.
I will tell you now that it can't be based on competition. It can't be because there's another cluster, the same thing.
Well, no, it's not competition. I think, I don't see how it's competition. It says, it says right here.
No, I understand what you're saying.
Located within this radius shall not be licensed, shall not be licensed, you know. And it, and we license another one that, you know, we have similar sort of places and...
Okay, that's what I'm saying. You can't, it cannot be a finding based on that, that there's already competition.
So my, my argument is not based on, my argument is based on the location that we have, you know. We don't need another alcoholic establishment that close to schools.
Could I add a comment to that? Just in terms of the licenses, the, a majority of those licenses are different because they're on-premise as opposed to off-premise, so it's the ability to like go in there and buy a bottle of wine and take it away. I guess with COVID, that's been relaxed a little bit, I think, for a shorter term period. But they're slightly different in structurally how they work and what the legal abilities are. You know, we can't sell somebody a glass of wine on-premise, but we can sell them a bottle to take away. Whereas like Max Burger, you can buy a glass of wine, but you can't buy a bottle to take home. I mean, that law is a little gray right now with COVID stuff, but...
Yeah, but you'll be serving.
Not, not really, no.
You'll be just, there'll be just wine tasting?
Yeah, wine tasting, but it's like very small sips and a only limited amount.
Is it, is any, I'm going to ask if there's anything else from the public. Any members of the public here to speak today, for or against? No, okay. Should we close the public hearing?
Sure.
Discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted...
Do you have a question?
More of a comment, really, because I've actually been to the place in North Hampton. I think you guys do a great job. And I think you'd be a good asset to Long Meadow, and we need tax revenue, and I think we need to welcome our business partners, so.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Set the motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
All right, all of us in favor? Any discussion? All of us in favor? Mark?
End the session, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So open to the board for discussion?
Yeah. You know, I, I see this as, as Mr. Hyde indicated, as an off-premise sale. You know, we, we have temporarily, hopefully, lost the bottle shop over in Maple and Shaker Road. I don't know, hopefully, it's temporarily. So I think that, that in fact, there is a, a demand, from what I can see in town, for people to have a place to buy, buy wine and, and craft beer. And so I, yeah, I, I understand your comments, Tom, about the, the concentration of places selling liquor over at the, at the Long Meadow shops. But I think we, you know, we crossed that bridge when we approved Max's and Ume's and Posto all in, in one location. But for somebody who's selling for, 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 you know, off-premises consumption, I think this is kind of a, not, not something I could see as supposing. I guess I certainly curiously asked Mr. Hyde if you signed the lease before you got your liquor license, because I hope you did not.
It's one of those things, you have to have a, a lease in order to apply for the license. So it's all conditional, and so like, you know, if we don't get the license, we don't have to commit to five years of rent. Thank goodness.
Well, I, I, you know, I see no reason why we, we shouldn't support this, and I see no reason why we could deny it.
I think this is a wonderful thing for the town. I think I'd do, I hope I'd do well here. This is not a place where kids from the high school are going to walk in. They probably can't afford it, luckily.
Yeah.
But yeah, I, if there's a reason we have a, a concentration in this town, we don't have a lot of commercial places. Massachusetts law allows us to have so many licenses, and in a town like this, they're going to end up in, concentrated. I see what you're saying, but I think it'll be, this is good for the town. Steve, do you have something to add?
No.
No, I just see, you know, that when we, I hear from so many folks in town that they want to preserve the character of our town. And so I see that the increasing amount of liquor distribution in town is changing the character of our town, so I'm going to vote against this.
Can I speak?
I'll close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion that we approve the liquor license for, what is this, for Oxbow Wines LLC.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All of us in favor? All of us opposed? Okay. And we'll make a separate, I have a motion to approve, actually, Lynn, how do we word this?
You move, there's no detrimental impact to the placement of the license in accordance with 138, section 16C.
Okay. Dan, you want to move on that?
I'll make that motion as ordered by the way.
Dan's the youngest here to remember the way I was. A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All of us in favor? All of us opposed? Okay. Congratulations. Best of luck.
Thank you so much.
Looking over there.
Really appreciate it.
And not here. Yeah, no.
Don't come back.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Floor plan, and then also the service side.
Moving on to voting on... Voting, moving on to voting on board and committee appointments. Mark?
I'll make a motion to approve Gregory Lonia for a three-year term for the Board of Health, expiring June 30th, 2025.
You want to do it unmasked, Mark, which you've done before?
Sure, we want to do it unmasked. Fine, I'll, I'll extend the motion to include the, the appointment of Dan O'Malley to the Building Demolition Committee for a three-year appointment, beginning June 30th, expiring June 30th, 2025. For Mary Beth Bergeron and Vince Bartland to the Building Committee for three-year terms, expiring June 30th, 2025. For Kieran Mathley to, to the Conservation Commission for a three-year term, expiring June 30th. To Saul Firestone and Judy Affey to the Council on Aging for three-year terms. And to, oh, to Roland Hawthorne and Evelyn Pratt for three-year terms. To the Cultural Council, Albert Hoffman to a three-year term on the Historic District Commission. For Jeffrey Welsh to a three-year term on the Recycling Commission. And Steve Bennett to a five-year term on the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? And all of us in favor? Any opposed? Congratulations to all those folks. Moving on to resident comments. And seeing none, any select board comments? Mark?
I have, I have a few. I, I've gotten a couple of emails and calls and things like that. I just thought a couple were worth pointing on, and so pointing, pointing to, and I was hoping that we'd, we'd maybe be able to speak about them during Lynn's, Tom, Tom Manager's report or beforehand. But a couple of concerns that I would like to make sure we talk about are, are getting a timeline that the old DPW building is closed. I know there are still some, some people working out of there, and it's, it's noticed by the, by residents who keep sending me notes saying, you know, we spent so many, so much money, and I tell them there's still some equipment that needs to be moved that we can't control. And I think I have the, the right answer, but I think we ought to get a timeline for when we can get, get, get people out of there. Similarly, you know, I, I'd like to get a timeline for fixing a, a traffic situation that's gone on far too long, is out of control. And that's a, the collapsing road on Inverness Lane in Long Meadow that's, and it's not just that the road is collapsing, but it's down to one lane. And if you're going west on, on Inverness, you're coming around the corner, and if you're not familiar with it, as you come around the corner, you're caught with barricades pushing you to the side of, of the road. you to the side of, of the road and, and I've, this weekend, almost got nailed by a car coming the other way and I know, you know, and I, and I'm aware of it, but they obviously weren't, and I think other people are too. It's, it's an accident waiting to happen. I've talked to Sean, uh, you know, Van Duzen about it. He's aware of it and it's been, but it's been there like that now for easy two years and, and I don't know what the status is, but I'd like to get a, a status update if, if we could. The, the final thing, Lynn, is something that was, that, that Josh mentioned in, in our announcements and, and that is that we've got a new process for building and zoning complaints. And I think, I think it's great. I think it's, it's needed. I think one of the shortfalls of this potentially is that, uh, it, it's gonna pit neighbor against neighbor as opposed to you're violating a bylaw, you, you need to straighten out your act. And, and I, I don't know if there's some way we can keep these complaints, if you will, anonymous, but, you know, I, I understand if something gets to a point where it goes to court, you need to have the complaint visible. But I, I'd hate to see that our building department is going up to somebody and knocking on the door and saying, well, don't blame me, but your neighbor over there, Mr. Levine, has been complaining and submitted this complaint against you. And, because I, I just think that's, that's the wrong approach. We like compliance with, with our zoning bylaws, but I know we've had some situations where neighbors have retaliated against neighbors when they've been told that there was a complaint. I don't know the best way to, to deal with this because I know we don't want anonymous complaints and this is intended to keep complaints from being anonymous. But I think at some point we need to, uh, somehow try to get this done without a situation that, that pits neighbor against neighbor. Uh, finally, I just comment that I, uh, I was asked, or I, I guess I asked quite a while ago on behalf of the Long Meadow Select Board and other select boards to submit a, a request from the, uh, Hampton County Regional Retirement Board for recovery of the funds that were lost due to their incompetence and/or illegal activities and/or potentially just mismanagement of the process. Uh, we've gone through the process, it's taken a long time. The number that I'd hate to report here is that we've got a number of about $7.1 million that we've identified from 2014 through 2017. Now, the audit from 2018, 19, and 20 has not yet been made public, so this is the 14 to 17 period of time. And that letter, uh, when we consulted with our attorney, we've actually got other towns that have gone in with us on submitting this letter of a, what our lawyer called the demand letter, but it's not really a demand, it's really a notification. We're looking for, to recover this from your, from your, uh, Directors and Officers Insurance Carrier. But that letter did go out and so I wanted to report that, that the letter went out. The number was a whole lot bigger than I thought it was gonna be originally.
Thanks, Mark.
I, I, I know this isn't a question answer, but, so insurance could cover that loss?
Be free.
We'll find out, man.
Hope springs eternal. You know, I, they have Directors and Officers Insurance, the amount of $15 million.
Okay.
Whether the, uh, whether the insurance carrier or, or even the board, I mean, technically the board can say, we're just gonna pay you. You know, it's, it's like somebody falls in your house and says, I'm gonna see your insurance company. Say, no, 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 here's a check for $200. Go, you know, you, you don't have to submit to your insurance company, but, but the thought is that they may for that amount of money and what the insurance company does is, you know, that's whatever the insurance company does.
Oh, did I say that?
Anyway, just wanted to report on that. Thank you.
We're insurance town, pretty much.
Steve?
Uh, yes, I would like to remind the citizens of Long Meadow that, uh, the filing for anyone in town who feels that the EverSource Pipeline Project from Long Meadow Country Club to downtown Springfield is not a good idea, uh, particularly for environmental reasons, because that's who is taking a look at this right now. Uh, Mass Environmental Protection Act, I believe, is the actual organization. Uh, July 28th is the last time for citizens to submit their comments, questions, objections, statements to MIPA. Uh, how to, where that is located, it's actually on the town website, isn't it? Can they, in terms of where they can send their, um, you can send their comments and the address, the email address is on the town website. So I encourage folks to, uh, to do that if they're so interested. Also, as this process goes on, since EverSource apparently does not believe that, uh, well, they, they appear to continue to forge on, uh, after, the next thing that's gonna show up in front of this town is the environment, uh, is the Energy Facility Siting Board. And they are the folks that actually make the decision whether this will go ahead or not. And there will probably be some public hearings in town, here and in Springfield, uh, probably as we head into the fall. So I, uh, encourage citizens to really pay attention to this process as it goes on, because again, just like with MIPA, uh, the, the Siting Board is gonna wanna hear from the citizenry about what they think about this project. So I encourage folks to keep paying attention.
Um, I would like to encourage everyone to please stay off the Wolf Grass, uh, sorry, the grass at Wolf Swamp Fields. Uh, I saw somebody playing golf there the other day and I almost drove off the road. Um, it's still under contract control. We paid a lot of money for these fields. Please don't mess it up while, before it's even open, um, and just stay off. Thank you.
Actually, I think I'll make a comment, just 'cause I, I've been, uh, seven years on the board and we've had a lot of liquor licenses come before us and never have we had any sort of a opportunity to, to refuse the license. Um, this was the first time and I commend the town manager, uh, we haven't gotten information like this from past town managers that show that there are some stipulations, uh, where, you know, we could refuse, uh, a lo- a license to sell alcohol. And, uh, because, you know, if this trend continues, I mean, if the board continually votes in every person who wants to sell alcohol in town, I mean, I, we could have every, everything in the town who'd be selling alcohol. I mean, we're getting there. It just seems to me, it's surprising, um, and I would joke about the club district in town, you know, and now, uh, not that this latest vote was for a club, but, um, you know, we, as a board, we need to think about that. I, I take my, that part of my job seriously because I know the alcohol, the problems alcohol can cause to families and individuals and, uh, there are some towns that are dry towns completely. They don't sell, uh, sell any alcohol. Matter of fact, um, uh, places that are big whiskey distilleries, um, have dry towns in that, in their facility. So, um, you know, I know, I was surprised I could have the opportunity to vote against an establishment and I don't know if we'll have any more opportunities to reduce the number of places that serve alcohol in town. But, um, you know, I, I think it's a part of our responsibility, so.
Are there any licenses left in town?
Yeah, yeah, we have, we have-
Lots.
Yeah, we have two or three anymore.
There's no complete package store licenses at this moment. It's just malt and, malt and, uh, yeah, malt and wine. And then we have, uh, probably two, I think around two all-alcoholic restaurant licenses. So it's actually not as, not as many.
Just nowhere to put them anyway. Okay.
All right.
Uh, any other comments from the board?
Yeah.
Dan?
Um, so what Josh had said, I just wanna touch on, um, the Wolf Swamp Fields as well. And I actually spoke with Lynn about this. Um, I saw the person golfing as well. Um, so I think we need to put some more signage up, number one. Uh, we do have that digital sign, um, but also I think we need to block off or put ropes up, um, at the entryways as well.
They're, they were up. This person went right around.
Uh, yeah, they were, okay. Well, when I saw over the weekend, it was, there's just no ropes or anything. There's, there's one sign. Um, so we spent, what, 1.5 million, I think, um, which is a great investment for the town and I just wanna make sure that, you know, we're off it and the grass is growing and, um, you know, it's good in 2023 or whenever we can get out there, so.
Okay, anything else? All right, uh, Town Manager's report.
Thank you. Uh, so the police department has been reaccredited. The Long Meadow Police Department received its accreditation award from the Mass Police Accreditation Commission. Chief Stocks and Captain Mazafaro, the department's accreditation manager, attended the award ceremony in Andover. The, this is the department's second award after receiving its first accreditation in 2019. This entails being audited every three years to provide, to prove compliance with 326 standards in addition to 24 standards of police reform. In February, a team of assessors evaluated the department's facility policies and practices to ensure the standards of the Mass Police Accreditation Commission are being met. The Long Meadow Police Department is the only municipal police agency in Hampton County that is fully accredited. I should also add that this is voluntary, that they do this on their own accord. A special recognition goes out to Captain Mazafaro for managing the accreditation process. Achieving the award was accomplished through the commitment of the diligence, diligence of every member of the police agency. The accolade is a symbol, is symbolic of the department's commitment to professional excellence and provide, proves the policies and procedures of the LPD have been deemed best practices of the profession. Um, as it was mentioned in the announcements earlier tonight, we're in a level two drought. This is also having an impact on the water tower levels, uh, at the Water Tower off Academy Drive. The lack of rainfall over the past four months is being felt across Massachusetts as 90% of the state is now experiencing drought conditions. On July 12th, the Massachusetts Energy and Environmental Affairs Secretary Bethany Carr declared that there was a significant drought in the, in the Connecticut River Valley, central northeast and southeast parts of the state, and mild drought in western Mass, Nantucket and Martha's Vineyard. Water consumption increases in Long Meadow during the summer months and during, um, the last week, we've seen impacts on our municipal water system due to excessive demand for watering. This is primarily due to irrigation alongs. Long Meadow does not have an unlimited supply of water. Our water comes from Springfield and is stored in our water tank. With excessive use, the water tank drops to a low level, causing a less than desirable situation. The supply from Springfield cannot keep up with the amount of consumption. We always try to maintain a certain level of surplus water in the tank primarily for firefighting. In the past week, we've come very close to not maintaining this surplus. We've seen these impacts particularly during early morning irrigation. We're asking residents and businesses to engage in water conservation primarily by limiting irrigation and any filling of pools during this period. Compliance is voluntary and we're working on some increased public messaging, uh, that will take place over the next week or so, including a reverse 911 call to residents to provide education. As was also mentioned during announcements, um, the building department has a new zoning complaint process. We've always taken written zoning complaints, but now they're required. It needs to be in writing, using either the new online form, requesting a form by mail, or filling out a form in person. And as always has been standing practice, anonymous complaints are not investigated. Individuals requesting information on the complainant will need to file a public records request to obtain a copy of the complaint. I think this speaks to a comment that Select Board Member Gold was making. Uh, this is not information that the, uh, staff in the building department willingly give up when a resident asks who made a complaint, uh, but they did in the past. If someone did ask, they would be forthcoming with that. Now, if that request is made, uh, the resident's going to be instructed to file a public records request and they will then receive an actual copy of the zoning complaint. Um, and stormwater bylaw review, we've hired Pioneer Valley Planning Commission to complete a regulatory review of our stormwater management code in order to bring us in compliance with the federal municipal separate storm sewer system permit. Uh, this permit was issued in 2016 and is phasing in with requirements annually. This code review will mostly focus on chapters 600, 700, and 800 of the general bylaws, but will also highlight areas in the zoning cor- code and subdivision rules and regulations that need to be updated to come into compliance. A portion of PVPC's recommendations will be mandatory for compliance and a smaller portion will highlight oppor- opportunities to update code to current low-impact development slash stormwater management best practices. These will be clearly identified so that the town is not confused as to which are required and which are simply recommended as best practice. The goal is to have the full recommendations, uh, at the track change level in place for special hearings in the late summer, early fall for adoption at the Fall Town Meeting. And the Bliss Road Cell Tower, power has been energized at the site. AT&amp;T has installed equipment and it went on air in April. Verizon's currently waiting materials to install. And that concludes my report. If you have any questions, I'm happy to take them.
Just a, as a follow-up to my comment about the DPW, I, you and I talked about this and I understood the, from you that there's equipment that we had couldn't, it's big stuff, it takes a while to get moved and stuff like, can we just, you know, get, try to get it or communicate to people a timeline-
Sure.
-for moving that so we can get people out of it.
Sure, I'm happy to speak to us now if you want.
Sure, go ahead.
So we've been working on this. Um, when the new director came on board in the beginning of May, this was a priority, um, that I had talked with him about. Um, the staff had already been putting together a list of equipment that's no longer needed. Um, the, there is quite a bit of equipment that is not needed and it won't all fit at the new DPW and there's no sense in keeping equipment that has aged out or, um, passed its useful life. Um, so that we are preparing, uh, we can't just get rid of stuff as we see fit, uh, we actually have to go through a process. So about twice a year, we auctioned equipment and that's what's, um, being prepared to happen in the early fall. Once that's all done, um, whatever's left that actually needs to be moved to the new facility will be moved and all staff will be reporting there no later than, um, sometime this fall. Uh, running tandem with that, we have the Solar Working Group that's working on, you know, what the potential reuse for that facility could be. Um, and then we also have money in reserve from the DPW contract to move forward with the demolition of the old structures there.
Right, thank you.
Anything else?
I could also speak to the Inverness Lane if you wanted me to.
Yeah.
Please.
Uh, so this was, you, you, um, you were a little ahead of where I was gonna be. Uh, my August 1st, um, Town Manager Report, I'll be reporting that, um, hopefully, we will have received bids in for about 35 to 40 catch basin repairs. It's out to bid right now, it closes on Friday. Uh, it's available on the town website. I just double-checked and 203 Inverness Lane is on that list, along with many of the others that residents have driven around and seen, including the ones at Grassy Gutter here. There's one on Ridge Road. These have been problematic catch basins that have been failing or in various states of failing for, um, upwards of two to five years. Uh, and it's an eyesore not only for the town, but also for the staff at the DPW who continuously drive by them and see that we just do not physically have the manpower to get to all of this work. So working with the engineering team, um, they worked hard to develop a list of all of the, um, repairs that are needed at the different catch basins and we put that out to bid. And that hopefully will be successful in the next couple of weeks. We'll have some contractors that are interested in submitting bids and I'm hoping to bring back to you August 1st, the announcement that, um, we've awarded a bid and they'll be giving us a schedule on work.
And Lynn, thank you.
And more importantly, thanks to Sean. I, I actually heard that from Sean when I spoke to him a month or so ago, that he was, he put that package together and put it out to bid and I think it, it speaks well for what we're trying to do for the DPW. I guess my only question is, and it may already be too late, is there any way that we can find money and do the catch basins on Grassy Gutter, so we're not trying to do them when school's in session? Or does that mean now we'll get the bid, we just won't do them now until next spring because, I mean, because otherwise if we're in wintertime, I mean, they're not gonna do it in the winter, I wouldn't think, but, you know.
Correct, so, correct. Um, what I'll also be bringing back to you is, um, uh, reprioritize ARPA spending plan. We had earmarked money for DPW, uh, when I submitted you the plan in December. At that time, I had not received any projects from DPW. We now have a new team in place, they're very much, um, willing to give me a, a list of projects they wanna see done. And I plan to bring you back that, um, the catch basin repair is one of those areas where I'd like to reprioritize and fund it out of ARPA to get them going on that right away.
Great, that's wonderful.
Any else, Lynn?
Unless you have more questions.
I have another question.
Where's that now?
So I, I sent you this note, but I'll do it in public. Any chance about the, the moving the Greenwood pool liner and cover to, to get it paid for out of CPA money in the fall?
That's not a question that I can answer.
Who would, who would need to submit it to, to the Community Preservation Fund to see if they would wanna consider funding this?
So they would need to start a new process.
Can, can the Select Board encourage them to start a new process?
So you mean have it funded on, as a warrant article for Fall Town Meeting?
Right, so, so just for background, so, you know, this, the Community Preservation has a certain amount of funds in a certain pocket, bucket, and one of the buckets they had approved money for was a skate park, which wasn't approved. So there's a, a considerable amount of money in their pockets, if you will, that has not been, been distributed. And my question is, you know, is- And my question is, you know, is there a way to start a new round of approvals so that we can ask the CPA to consider funding the Greenwood Pool Liner and Cover, which would then free up the, we've, this is what we call, raise and appropriate, which is tax money that was approved at the town meeting for that same thing, because CPA money's already been spent. And I understand that CPA would have to do it, but I would think that we could encourage them to, to take, take another look at it, because it's not like the money's being spent on anything else, and it would certainly save town residents several hundred thousand dollars, because that money has already been paid into the CPA fund. How long does that take, the CPA process?
So I'm aware of, there's some communities that do two rounds of funding. They do a spring round and a fall round. What I don't know is if we can just ask the Community Preservation Committee to start a fall round, I'm not sure. We can ask that question. The other thing that was pointed out is, there is a lingering question that we would need to figure out, is a pool liner and a pool cover considered deferred maintenance? And if it is, then it's not eligible. So we would need to find that out as well. These are questions we can look into, and I can report back to you.
Yeah, please. You know, in terms of, Josh, my opinion, and it's only my opinion, is that the town is approved paying for it, so we bought it, but we will be buying it, or, you know, put it out for bid, whatever. But as long as we're within the same fiscal year, should community preservation funds be eligible and be available and then be, be committed by a town meeting, it becomes an accounting move to take it out of, raise and appropriate, and put it into, you know, pay for it out of a different bucket, because it's within the same fiscal year. So I, I don't, I didn't see that as a, I haven't checked with our CFO, but I didn't see that as a, as the barrier it was. And it's not like we're waiting for CPA to buy the thing, we're going to buy it, it's just a matter of can we pay for it out of a different pocket. And I think your point is right, Lynn, if it's allowed. Okay, old business. Motion to accept the June 6, 2022 draft minutes.
So moved.
Any second? Any discussion? Wait, take a second?
Yeah. I'll, I'll second it, but I, I sent Mike, and I have some typos, I mean, you know, an S is missing, or D, or something like that, just minor typos that, you know, I didn't look through it carefully, I may find a couple more.
Let's Google autocorrect for you. It actually autocorrected to the D instead of the S.
I know, instead of plural, but whatever, so. I took feed to feed or something like that, but with those corrections.
Motion subject to the corrections, any discussion? Anyone who was in favor?
At Epstein, yeah. I was not here.
There weren't too many people there.
I learned my lesson the first time.
You, you, so you're proving it?
I proved them, yeah, the three of us, yeah, we're good.
Well, thanks for not trying again. All right, so, you got that, Mike?
Yep, thank you.
Okay, moving on to new business. A mission and membership precedence for DEI advisory committees, and Corinne, come present to us, please.
So included in your packet for this meeting, there was a memo that summarized the, some of my research into some literature pertaining to DEI in municipal and corporate workplaces, and also the results of a precedent roundup of other Massachusetts communities that have formed DEI committees. And I just want to note that this is not, the communities that are mentioned in the memo are not exhaustive of all Massachusetts communities, they're just examples of ones that illustrated the point that I was making in that section of the memo. So the memo touches on primarily two topics, the scope and the membership of these committees. So regarding scope, I'm just going to summarize the two sections very briefly. I'm happy to answer any questions at the end, but really, this is meant to encourage your own conversation, so take it as you will. So regarding scope, there are essentially two types of DEI scope. DEI, for clarification, stands for diversity, equity, and inclusion. And these two types are internal facing and external facing. So internal scopes focus on driving institutional change within the organization, and ex, so in a municipal case, this could include the hiring, promotion, and employee retention practices, and it might also include ensuring equitable levels of service across neighborhoods, et cetera. So it's what the employees of the town are doing, both within HR context, and also how we are prioritizing our work that serves the community. External scopes focus on community-level change, which could include responding to individual incidents outside of the municipal workplace. So if there was an incident of racism in the Big Y, for example, where one resident had an aggressive encounter with another resident, or, you know, with a real estate agent and a prospective buyer, et cetera. And those types of committees tend to focus on providing peer-to-peer education and instigating cultural shifts. So that's primarily the difference between the two. In the memo, there's examples outlined of different Massachusetts communities with DEI committees focusing on each type of scope or a combination of the two. They're not, they don't have to be explicitly external or internal. One of the major challenges with DEI work is, in measuring any sort of success with a DEI initiative, is that oftentimes there are no realistic or measurable goals set forth as a way to gauge progress for a committee or a new DEI program, et cetera. It might also be true that the wrong DEI tool is used to try to tackle any given DEI problem. So I bring this up because the incidents reported in the Coalition for Racial Justice Task Force report were largely external to the municipal workplace, so they focus on incidents that happened within the community. For that reason, any DEI committee established by the Select Board should have an external focus to tackle those issues. It would make sense to establish, in my opinion, to establish a DEI committee that focused exclusively on HR hiring practices within the municipality to tackle incidents of racism that happened on a peer-to-peer level outside of Town Hall. At the same time, it's possible to establish two groups. So there's, there's, the Select Board is talking about the establishment of an advisory committee to the Select Board, that would be the DEI committee. Internally, it's also possible that we could establish a DEI working group differentiated from the committee. The working group is different from the committee in the way that I'm talking about them, which would tackle our internal hiring practices, equitable opportunities for employees, promotional efforts, et cetera. These two groups would be separate from each other because they tackle very different issues, but they could have designated liaisons to attend each other's meetings so that they keep each other informed, and issues are tackled from a holistic standpoint. The memo also addressed the ideal membership of a DEI committee, which should be representative of the diversity that exists within town in all of its forms. Soliciting and recruiting membership from diverse populations will pose its own challenges, but many other Massachusetts communities have delineated explicit charges for representative membership in their DEI committees to make sure that it's not the same voices that are heard over and over again now coming to sit on the DEI committee. In the memo, I included some charts depicting census data around some resident characteristics in Long Meadow, but it's important to note that many characteristics are not tracked by the census, such as sexual orientation or gender identity. And so these data points are only meant to inform the conversation and not to guide it when we're talking about membership of, ideal membership for a DEI committee in Long Meadow. And lastly, I included the Town of Concord's DEI Commission's charge at the, at the very end of the memo, which was attached as an example of a committee with a well-defined external focus. One of the things that I realized during my research is that many, many of the committees that either had a totally external focus or a primarily external focus had really very vague charges, where they wanted to reduce, you know, it might be a line of like, this committee exists to reduce incidents of racism in town, or to make everyone feel welcome in town, which, you know, doesn't mean really anything. It's, it's not a defined goal. And so I thought Concord did a really excellent job, and was the only community that I saw that had an externally focused committee, but, but really said the goals that they wanted that committee to try and achieve or reach for.
Thank you, Corinne. I, I know you've been working on this for a while, and I appreciate all the hard work. I found it very interesting in looking around what other towns in the state are doing. And so if you could just break down again what your, your recommendation is, go ahead.
Yes, so my recommendation, this is, and I think that's a good point, there, so there's some research that I sort of summarized in the memo, but my, but my recommendation, which is just my recommendation, is that the town, well, is that the Select Board established an externally-focused advisory committee because the, I, I think that the Long Meadow Coalition for Racial Justice's report did an excellent job in terms of relaying a lot of community concerns and highlighting individual instances which otherwise, you know, we might not have ever heard about. I think the recommendations listed in that report did not always line up with the bulk of the type of incidents that they reported. There was a lot of the town, there was a lot of recommendations around the town's, you know, training all staff in DEI trainings, reviewing our hiring practices, et cetera, all of which are very important and we should be doing, which is why I also have the recommendation that we establish another group to do that. But I, I don't think that those recommendations really have any power to shift any sort of cultural, I don't, I don't really know what phrase to use, but any sort, that shift the culture of the town, so, or provide any peer-to-peer education of, you know, what, what is the difference between, you know, the sort of historical notion of racism that we might have, which is that you're, you know, literally chasing people who don't look like you out of town versus microaggressions, et cetera. So those types of strategies would come from an advisory group that focuses on education, that is comprised of residents who are well-connected in town, and who have, you know, the finger on the pulse of what's going on with different, you know, different subgroups that live in town anyway. Whereas a DEI working group that would have the internal focus would be comprised of department heads, town staff, with the help of a consultant to review our internal, you know, practices that would include HR practices, include how DPW, this is an example, how DPW prioritizes which potholes get fixed first, or which catch basins get fixed first, and which part of town, to make sure that there's equitable levels of service, no matter what neighborhood somebody lives in, no matter if it's the neighborhood that has the highest concentration of people who are 75 years and older, or the highest concentration of, you know, minority races living there. Is that clear?
Oh, yeah, I just wanted to.
Yep.
Give it a catch-all, I, I think that's a useful way to explain it. Because I do think the, having both is smart. I think the internal, looking inside and how the town acts with itself, I think can give an example to the rest of the town how it should work, but it's not going to necessarily, you need the external facing to really demonstrate and educate. So I think you're, you're on point there. And you talked about some of the people on the pulse, have you, have you spoke with the task force, task force members or LARC about what you're thinking?
I've sat in, I sat in one meeting during my time here with Lynn, but primarily, I'm referring to the report that they wrote, that I read, and I watched the, their conversation with you here on, was it May 16th that they were here? So the, I didn't, you know, confer with them for this memo.
Well, there's a lot of, LARC is a different group, they're not.
Oh, sorry, I spoke with LARC.
Yeah, LARC, there's a lot of overlap, but LARC, LARC's not a town entity.
I think LARC was actually who we met with, not the Coalition for Racial Justice, yeah.
LARC is very, as you said, tuned in. They may, I think, that, that's who we'd look to for recommend, if not, membership recommendations for the committee. Tom?
Yeah, great work, because we want to keep things moving forward in this direction, and appreciate this information here. It's, it's interesting that, you know, you have these graphs at the end that show about 16, 70% of, 17 of people, percent of people in town will identify themselves as non-white, so that it's not a huge number. But then we looked at other groups, and it's interesting for individual income, you know, that that's a group that, you know, we have just a small percent of people who are poverty level, but there are a lot of people who, their income isn't all that, there's not a lot of disposable income. I mean, folks will choose to come to Long Meadow, and both parents are working full-time, and they're just trying to make ends meet, to keep the kids in the school system, and so, you know, those are groups that also need to be heard from, you know? And, and so it, I appreciate the information you had at the end, and the, and housing, of course, the fact that there's only 9% are rent or occupied, and most people own their own homes in town. And again, the, the only question, the thing I wasn't quite sure of, on the internal responsibilities list, you talked about several things, shifting culture, shaping policies on the far-right side, it says coordinating evaluations, and so I don't understand how the internal person would be involved in coordinating evaluations, can you, just give me a little?
So this was actually clipped, there's a little citation at the bottom from the municipal DEI guide that was put out by Metropolitan Area Planning Commission. So, so the language that's in this graphic refers to the language that they're using in their guide, but what they mean by that coordinating evaluations is, when you hire a consultant to, when a municipality would hire a DEI consultant to come to do a DEI audit of the municipality, you know, they would look at our internal policies, such as our hiring practices, what's included in an application, what do we require of candidates, et cetera? How do we decide who to promote internally? Or, 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 you know, is every employee given equitable opportunities for educational opportunities, professional development, et cetera? So the evaluations include sort of like the polit, like taking a look at the policy, taking a look at culture, and both, you know, explicit and implicit and explicit culture in the workplace, and essentially doing a DEI evaluation and saying, you're doing these things, here are the best practices, this is what the municipality is doing, here are the areas that you can improve. So that's what the evaluations refers to there.
Yeah, I could see that'd be very valuable, because you may have certain department that's discriminating, and if no one's looking at that evaluation process, they wouldn't pick up on that. So having an internal person there would be good. And the, the other part, in terms of working, the external responsibilities, working with community organizations, are you talking about community organizations in the, in the valley kind of thing?
Both. So LARC was a, a great example, the, the new DEI advisory committee that the, you know, Select Board would create, would, you know, work with organizations like LARC, like Long Meadow-based and regional organizations that are focused, or that are focused on, I mean, so, well, first I'll just say, you know, the Select Board has the opportunity to set the scope here of the advisory committee, right? And then the advisory committee themselves can refine the scope, or however that is set up the relationship between the Select Board with the advisory committee. So, so this is hypothetical, I'm not, I don't know exactly what the advisory committee would end up focusing on, or who they would end up partnering with, but LARC would be a natural partner. Any of the, the, like, religious institutions in, in town would be natural partners because they serve, you know, a diversity of residents themselves, you know, partnering with both the Christian and the Jewish religious organizations. I'm not sure if we have any other religious organizations outside of that. But then I do make the point in the memo, and this is another recommendation on my part, that the Long Meadow is not very diverse by some standards, and is pretty diverse by some other standards. So you made the point about, about how, I think you were referring to the, the race chart where 84% of Long Meadow residents identify as white. So that's by far and away, you know, our largest racial population.
Right.
That being said, you know, I don't want to dismiss the other 16%, so there, there is, there is, they're not all necessarily one monolith, monolithic group, but, you know, there are other races and ethnicities represented in Long Meadow. But there are, so we, we might not have any locally Long Meadow-based organizations that serve Latinos, for example, but there are certainly some in our neighboring communities. And some of our residents that identify as Latino are, are. And some of our residents that identify as Latino or, or are Hispanic might be served by those organizations as well, either regularly or occasionally. And so it might behoove the advisory committee to partner with one of those organizations, even if they're based out of Springfield or based out of North Hampton or, you know, maybe somewhere like East Long Meadow or something like that, to have that sort of, both a regional voice, but also that particular voice for the community that they serve at the table. And, you know, you might decide that, or the advisory committee, you know, might be set up in such a way where those members, they would not be voting members, but they would be regularly invited to participate in the conversation, you know, that, that's a decision that would have to be made. But Long Meadow is a community with set borders, but we're in a, a region here with very fluid, you know, working environments and major highways, et cetera. So there's a lot of people who are coming in and out of town, who live in town, who benefit from regional organizations.
Yeah, you've done a great job of answering my questions. And then the other part too is that within our community is Bay Path University, and they may, they have a more diverse student population and trying to integrate and have them feel comfortable in the town, you know, could be something the external person would do that you recommended.
Right, that's a great point.
So, thank you.
Corinne?
Corinne, thank you for this. I, I understand the, I think you spoke about it as, as a advisory committee to the Select Board, and I think that certainly is, is, is important. But you also spoke about a DEI working group for internal issues. I, I'd just like to get your thoughts on how does that, how will that, should that work relative to our HR department? Who I thought traditional HR department is charged with assuring, you know, DEI kind of compliance, if you will, not just compliance, but, but above and beyond. So how does, how does an internal working group, as you defined it, you know, jive with, with our HR system?
I might invite Lynn to step in on this too, because certainly I'm, this, since working this position, this is the closest I've ever worked with HR, and I think like many people, what they do is kind of a mystery to me. Not to say that they're, you know, I'm just saying it's obscure to me. It's not what I do. But I, I think that there's two points that I would make before actually giving that question to Lynn, which is that I, I don't know that I would say that what HR is tasked with is DEI. I, I think what HR is tasked with is certainly providing equitable opportunities to all employees and make sure, making sure that policies, that policies are fair and are justifiable and are applied evenly. But I, I think there's a difference between having sort of like a, a blind eye when it comes to, blind doesn't the right word, having a colorblind eye, just for lack of a better phrase, when it comes to applying policies than to have your mission be focused on ensuring that you understand what every diversity exists in the municipal workplace and your understanding sort of how, who's harmed and who's helped by any given policy that seems fair across the board on paper. And to, to put DEI squarely in HR's board is giving them, is sort of absolving every other department of having to worry about that by calling it an HR matter. I, I think that that's a common fear and something that often happens is that it becomes an, an HR thing. And ideally, the, the DEI working group would not be doing HR's job, but would be a business partner to HR, where HR doesn't feel like their toes are being stepped on, they still have the same purview they had previously. But they can work hand-in-hand with the DEI working group or, or, you know, whatever comes from the DEI, the DEI working group, which might be, you know, in the future officer or something like that, to be essentially the business partner, as I was saying.
Fine, I, I just, I just want to make sure that an employee who doesn't perceive an issue that's, falls under the umbrella of DEI, doesn't know, do I go to HR or do I go to this internal grouping? Because I think, you know, historically I've been taught, taught that if you have an issue, you know, there's a, there's a process and it's a very formal process. Talk to your supervisor, if that doesn't work, there's, you know, it's, it's a very formal process through, through the HR system. I don't know, Lynn, if you want to.
Well, can I actually clarify?
Put me out of my misery here, but.
Sorry, I, I just, you made me realize where I don't think, I didn't totally understand your question. So I don't think that, in the way that I'm envisioning this, the working group would not be somebody that any individual, it would not be a body that any individual employee goes to, to have a grievance or to, you know, to file a complaint, et cetera. It would be a working group that, whose purview is reviewing policies and making recommendations and suggesting new policies that then get applied across departments, or guiding principles that then get applied across departments in whatever way it makes sense. But HR is still the, the place that you would go to follow those policies, as you're saying, especially given so many of our positions are union, like I, I think we have to keep that, the way that it's been. So Lynn, I don't know if you can.
Thank you. Anything else from us, the board?
Real quick, what, so the, so the board is going to appoint this committee and form the, the committee? When, when will that happen?
Well, I think, yeah, I, I think we need to work on a scope first. So Corinne, would you be able to draft, I guess draft scope? We can talk about that from there? Or a draft charge?
Did everybody have a chance to read the Concord charge?
I did, yeah. I, I think if you want to base it on that, I, I think that that is, it seems to be pointed to me and is a good place to start at least, and if we want to tweak it.
So, to make sure I understand, draft, draft a charge for a DEI advisory committee? And it sound, I mean, I've only been answering questions, but it, it sounds like the idea of having externally faced, facing committee is acceptable to the board? And so that's the type of draft charge you would like to see? Like, per what I recommended?
Yeah, I won't speak for everyone, but yes, that's what I would like to see.
Yeah. If in fact the, the internal working group is something to, to help identify, and I won't say set policies, but recommend policies or, you know, interface with the town manager, your staff and, and, and other departments, I think that's also an important step to take. And, and like I, my concern was ought that not be part of the HR department? And if, if we're saying it need not be, or it hasn't been, it can't be, or they're not qualified to do it because of their makeup or for whatever reason, then it's important that that function be available within the town management system. You know, whether it's that, and whether they're advisory to the town manager and your staff, or they're advisory, the HR department, I think that ought to be, or that is just as important as the, this external group that, that addresses what I'll call town-wide issues that the Select Board has, you know, has, as advisors, if you will. I don't know, Lynn, did that make sense?
It does. And I think that's why the recommendation is, there's an internal group and an external group. The internal group, the board, you could give me a directive or hopefully at our goal-setting meeting in August, that is baked in as one of the goals, is that the town manager is directed to form an internal group with HR at the table. I think as Corinne and I talked this through, I don't think either one of us ever envisioned that this would be outside of HR. It's also not going to be owned by them either. This is a large topic that is best suited for multiple departments to have input on, especially if it's an internal group. And so I think, I mean, that would be hopefully the direction that I would like to take it with an internal focus. In terms of the external focus, really, we're looking for guidance from you, or we're giving you a framework and for you to decide what you like and what you don't like, but really that external end would be a conversation for you all to have.
Joshua, I could, I, I'd like to see something like the Concord Committee or some, as you used to call it, the charge for, if we're going to put out a call for people to, to, to apply for the DEI advisory committee to the Select Board, I think people need to know what they're applying for.
Right.
I think it'd be great to bring that back to Select Board and if we, Dan, here again to the question, if we like it, we adopt it and put out the call for people to apply.
And, and what about the hybrid model that they talk about in here, where you, we might have a group that would sort of look at both of those?
I think your report said that's not necessarily the best idea, right? Have each have charge?
I, my, I don't know that I explicitly went into what my opinion was about, about that in, in the memo, but my opinion is, having looked at several communities that have that, is that the, it's not clear necessarily what the priority is. And it might be at the meetings, you know, I, I wasn't actually able to get ahold of anyone. I was reading on their websites and any articles I could find, but no one actually ever responded to me when I, you know, called a couple of communities and asked, you know, tried to ask them how they set up their, their committees. But the, so from reading the websites and, and any news articles I could find about them, it's not necessarily clear what the priority is. And I think what happens is that if you have both, it's very easy, the internal stuff is easy, it's easier to identify. It's easier to say, oh, this is a town committee, we're going to make sure the town is hiring diversely. And, and then, because how do you, I don't know the answer to this, it's hard. How do you, how do you stop racism in a grocery store? You know? And, but, but for us to just say, we're going to, okay, we're going to have all of our staff trained, go through like a, you know, two-day DEI training or something like that, we're going to make sure that our HR processes are hitting best practices, would be to be ignoring almost every single incident that's listed in this Long Meadow Coalition for Racial Justice report. And so I think it would actually, you know, it, it would be like lip service, is what I'm saying. Not, the internal stuff has to happen and it's very important, and I don't mean to say that it's not, but it, but it's, it's sort of the easier thing to comprehend in our minds. So when, when you have, when, if we were to say we're going to have an advisory committee that focuses on both, then we have an advisory committee that is maybe not necessarily made up of HR experts and it's not, they're not municipal employees, they don't really know how a municipal workplace works, probably. They're, they're residents who live in town. And they know what they see in town, but they don't know what goes on in the workplace. And so having the two separate scopes allows municipal professionals to come together and have a dedicated space to tackling this problem with the help of an external consultant and with also a liaison, so that, you know, there's, there's sort of like the outside eyes, making sure that we're talking about what we need to be talking about internally. But, and then it also allows the external people to really keep that focused and not just sort of look to the, the more comprehensible, you know, check, check the box strategies. So that, that was, that is my opinion, which I didn't.
Tom, I think to answer your question, or to get my input, if we have, boards have a liaison, they're coordinating, so that's what's going on. I think that's the way to accomplish here, because if you're trying to focus on everything at once.
Right.
It's more easy to implement HR practices than, you know.
And I think it is hard for people who've never worked for a municipality or a state government to understand that it's a lot different working in that capacity than it is in a business capacity or a large corporation. So I, I think that having, you know, a focus on the external would be a good first step to get, you know, keep the momentum moving forward then, you know?
All right, so, yeah, if you can bring us the charge back?
Sure.
I think that, that sounds great.
And I'll also just clarify really quickly that, that as, when we talked about the MVP Action Grant that we submitted, which was the Climate Resilient Update to our Long Range Plan, we also included as a part of that a DEI strategic plan that would actually be focusing on the internal side. So that, we have that application out there, we're waiting to hear back, but that would kickstart both the evaluation that Mr. Locusa pointed out, you know, the evaluation language, but also the working group. And I think we're going to hear back from that very shortly, actually. I think they've made their decisions already and we're just waiting to hear. So that, that will be something we can update on too, as we learn more.
Okay. Thanks, Corinne, nice job. Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Next on the agenda, Historic District slash Historical Commission Certified Local Government Application. Mr. Casey, how are you?
Good.
Thank you for.
Certainly you're not for a bad.
I'll take that, I'll take that.
Hey, it worked out.
Yeah, it did, it did. It all, it all worked out, it all worked out.
Now, so please, please go ahead and tell us about what we're trying to accomplish here.
So to, so a certified local government is a certification from the Massachusetts Historical Commission and it's in conjunction with National Park Service. It's to ensure local governments are adhering to the highest standard of federal, highest federal standards of historic preservation. And it's to strengthen coordination between the National Park Service, Massachusetts Historical Commission, and our local government. So what does it do? So the National Park Service gives money to the Massachusetts Historical Commission. They are then mandated to pass a certain amount of that only to certify local governments when they apply for it. So to give you guys an idea, the, the normal pot of money is anywhere between $300,000 and $500,000, and that's for all, all towns, all 351 communities in the state. There is then an additional $115,000 that is only available to certify local governments. There are only 27 of them right now. We would be number 28. So as you can see, there's a significant amount of money that's actually open to a smaller group. There's also the benefit of access to increased technical assistance from the National Park Service and the Massachusetts Historical Commission. And if we are to apply to put any areas or buildings on National Register of Historic Places, we get priority with the National Park Service. Why are we doing this now? Well, we, there is a position that is required called Certified Local Government Coordinator. And we never had someone who at the time or the expertise to do it. I'm actually standing in for Tom King, who is going to be our Certified Local Government Coordinator. He's on vacation, so I figured I would, I would come and I've been helping with it. We've also had an increasing cooperation between the Historical Commission, the Historic District Commission, because we're trying to preserve holistically. And we're also trying to adopt a, a plan for historic preservation, which would be an addendum, which would be in conjunction with the master plan, I know the town's working on, this would be kind of flowing from that, but focusing more on, on our historic resources. What are we asking you to sign off on? So it's very, very simple. The Historic Commission and the Historic District Commission need to meet once a fiscal year. They need to file a annual report with the Massachusetts Historical Commission that's going to suspiciously look like our annual report to the town. And we also say that we have to adhere to open meeting law. And, well, there's a lot more awful penalties if we don't adhere to open meeting law than disappointing MHC. What are the benefits for the town residents? So with the increased money, there's of course the educational aspect. So if we survey buildings, we do, we do educational outreach, citizens can learn more about their houses. We get emails about that all the time. One of the other things is that by creating the National Register of Historic Districts or putting buildings on the National Register of Historic Places, they are open for certain state and federal tax benefits. So, yeah, that is why we are applying and happy to answer any questions.
It sounds too good to be true. Are there any downsides?
I mean, aside from trying to get a bunch of people to submit their resume, which is quite actually much more difficult than I thought it was going to be, and, you know, having to also just fill out a normal, you know, federal bureaucratic application, which we all know is not always the most fun thing to do, that's really it. That's, that's really it. And I think the, the other thing that we did, that we did need to do, and I don't think we realized before we started this process, was we did need to update our bylaws when we had to disentangle the Historic Commission, Historic District Commission's bylaws because they were inaccurate for how we function now.
So, any other thing, so you mentioned surveys, is there anything else that the money, the money can be used for?
It, it, well, the, the plan I was talking about is another, is another impetus for this. So we, we have, you know, we thought about going it and trying to do it ourselves on kind of a volunteer basis. We made the determination that, did that the last time, and the last time we did a report, say, and we want to guess, when was the last plan done? It's on the town website, 1988. Folks, I wasn't even born yet. So we're a little overdue. We're supposed to do one every five to 10 years. So we really think that for the, a town our size has a lot of historic resources compared with the size of town government and compared with the size of the population. So hiring an external consultant, which, which is what this money could be, could help for, obviously we'd have to be with CPA funds mixed in because it's a matching situation, but that would be another thing that we would definitely be interested in, in, in using the funds for.
Well, a few things, first is, it says you'd add a few houses. Would that mean that Johnny Appleseed's house would finally be protected?
You know, I, I, that's, that's a, that's a great question, that's a great question.
Where, where is Johnny Appleseed's?
Fourteen Fairfield Terrace. It is the oldest house in town and you would not know, it was built in sixteen ninety-five.
Yeah, but it's not in Historic District properly, and it doesn't have protections that it would have otherwise.
Well, it's been heavily modified, so that's, that's.
You wouldn't notice it.
So.
Looks nothing like that.
Yeah.
But the, the other question, the, the meatier one is, we have a lot of, the town has some historic buildings and they're not all handicapped accessible, because it would be very expensive for the town to do so. Not that we're resistant to doing it, it's just the money is, is, would there be any grants to help make buildings accessible if the federal government was part of this process?
I don't know if there would be grants, but there would be technical assistance in terms of how can we do this in a way that would be, that would be both accessible but also historically sensitive. The, the National Park Service, and I'm blanking on what it's called, but they have an entire division that's just for technical assistance like that. So they could, you know, you know, help come up with a plan for something like that. But I'm not exactly sure about specific funds for that.
All right, because that would be an important thing for us to, to look at. Because if they said, well, here's these great buildings, we'll put them in Historic Register, but now you have to make them all accessible, that could be a burden for.
Actually, the thing is, is that it's actually the opposite. So there are certain exemptions to ADA when you put something into a National Register. If, if and only if it would, I forget the exact wording, but it's like you would have to in, harm something that would make it no longer historic. So it, it, there are, obviously, we should try to make our historic buildings as accessible as possible. But in, if there is a, a situation where it would, you know, damage the historical integrity of the building beyond the point where it would make, you know, would lose historic value, I think is, but again, that's, that's a, that's more of a town council item than an item.
Thank you.
So Tim, this sounds like, you know, I'm with Josh here, it sounds too good to be true, but it sounds like this is entirely the Historic District Commission, Historic Commission endeavor. And I guess I'm gonna turn to the town manager and say, does this impose any requirements on our town government? And, and my skepticism comes from looking back at, at what I'll call community preservation, which was, what a great deal, we're gonna be one of thirty towns and the, the state's gonna match us one for one on dollars. And here we are thirty years later, we're still taxing everybody with a surcharge, and the state's matching a fraction of that, and there's a lot of town involvement in it, which didn't go the same way. So I'm just, just looking at what's the downside from the towns, town, you know, administration?
Yeah, I had kind of the similar skepticism reading it, that both of you shared. Maybe, I've been in this too long, but there's always usually a negative. But I did have a question, you mentioned that Tom King was the one that was the Certified Local Government Coordinator. What happens if Tom is not here? Who, who then becomes, like, what's the lift in being the coordinator?
It's, it's really, oh, that's a great question. It's, it's the, actually, our memorandum of understanding actually covers what the CLG coordinator's role is, but, which I believe is with the meeting materials. And it's basically that Tom is responsible for submitting the annual report. So Maggie Cohn and I write our annual report to the town. He will then remove dear honorable select board and put them basically both together and ship them off to Mass Historic. That's number one. And then number two is, we have to have a joint meeting, he's responsible for organizing that. So all we would do is if Tom were no longer to want to be a Certified Local Government Coordinator or were to leave town or were no longer beyond the commission, we would just appoint, we would have a joint meeting and then we would appoint another one.
Can I follow up? Do you have to reapply for this every year, every five years?
No, it, so there is a, we do the annual, you know, file the annual report. We certify that we're, we, both commissions certify that we're adhering to the open meeting law. And then there is a, every three years, we have to, we have to, I'm not gonna say reapply because that's not the correct word, but we have to basically prove that our makeup of members, which is why I was asking about certain members for the Historic District Commission and, and, and why we have those certain roles for people to be qualified. They'll take a look at basically our res, we'll have to resubmit our resumes. And they also will probably take a look to make sure that we're keeping minutes, we're posting, we're posting them where we're supposed to, things like that. So there is like kind of an open meeting law audit, a audit of membership, but that's only every three years.
Can I ask another, if this turns out to be biting off more than we can chew here or some, you know, what's the process by which we say, you know, it was a good, a good shot, but we just don't have the resources to maintain it?
This is a great question, it would be, you, you would, you know, we, we as both commissions, we would say that we wanna do this, we have presented to you, and then you would present a letter to the Massachusetts Historical Commission and then the executive director saying that we no longer want to participate in this program. And that would be that.
Have you gotten in contact with any other towns that do this?
You know, there's, there's only one town west of Worcester that is certified and it's Holyoke. And, and it, actually, Tom has been in contact with some other organizations. He went to a, he actually went to a training. And I believe Great Barrington and Lennox are also going through the process right now. And really, most, what most people have said is it's very light work to, you know, cost versus benefit. It is just a cost of time. You know, if you're doing your annual reports like you're suppo, like you're doing to your town, if you're keeping meeting minutes like you're, you're supposed to, it's a fairly light lift for the amount of money that we're open to.
I just keep trying to find the catch.
You know what the, the catch is, and honestly, is that, is trying to get people to really, and honestly, I think it is, trying to get people to submit their resume was the hardest part of it. I mean, just chasing people down, trying to make sure that, and then the resumes have to be in a certain format, that sort of thing. So it, it's, the application itself is a little bit, is, is a little bit daunting. And I think that that's probably the barrier, it's not the maintenance, so to speak.
Tom?
So when you look at this, what this will cover and look at Historic District and so what, what would be the differences between how it addresses people's private properties versus town properties?
You know, that's, that's, that's a good point. So with the funding, the, the main impact for people with private property is going to be if we were to set up a National Register Historic District. So that is different than a local Historic District, it's far less restrictive. But when you, if your, if your private property is a contributing structure to a National Register Historic District, the, if you do repairs to, you know, repairs to maintain your house, there's actually a Massachusetts State Income Tax Credit. So that, that would be like the one benefit. If you're a business, there is a federal income tax credit. So if you were like Long Meadow Country Club or actually the, you know, the little shops that are across where from?
Spa on the Green?
Yeah, yep, Spa on the Green, exactly. Then if you make repairs to your property that keep it, you know, historic, then you're eligible for income tax credit, Spa on the Green's a great example. For the, for the town, so these funds are eligible for CPA badging. So if we were to do, you know, the community house needed something or center of school needed something, this would be an extra level of funding that could match CPA funds that we currently don't have access to. So the state could in theory pick up more of the tab.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Do we wanna chew on this for a little bit before we vote on it?
Yeah, we, we were trying to talk about it in one meeting and then look at it at a second.
It's gotta sit on my desk, but happy to vote on it next meeting. All right, thanks, Tim.
Of course, appreciate it.
All right.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
All right, next up, discussion of select board vacancy. My understanding, Steve is leaving because his phone rang during the meeting.
They're calling me.
But, yeah, I, Mark, I'll just read, MGL, Mass General Law, Chapter forty-one, Section ten, going down to the pertinent part, if there is a failure to elect or vacancy occurs in the office of selectmen, the remaining selectmen or selectmen may call a special election to fill the vacancy and shall call such election upon the request in writing of two hundred registered voters of the town or twenty percent of total number of registers of the town, whichever is lesser, provided that such requests is filed with them not less than one hundred days prior to the date of the next annual election. Go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, I asked that this be put on the agenda. I was on the select board the last time there was a vacancy for people who don't remember, the people at home was Christine Swanson, who moved to Georgia and resigned in October, November of twenty eleven. And, you know, the, the timeline was then drawn out for us. And I had a copy of it, I think I sent it to Josh and I, you know, the, the town clerk. The, the, my understanding is based on our current requirements of our bylaws and the structure that we have, given the fact that we have to allow for, even though there may not be a preliminary election. The minimum time between when we call an election and it would be held is ninety-two days. And so if tonight we were to decide we wanted to call an election, you know, we already missed September, which was the statewide primary. And so you say, well, how about November? And so Lynn looked into this at our request and, you know, if you don't mind, I'll just say what Lynn found out, which is essentially you can hold it on November, we can hold a special election on November eighth, but we need a separate ballot, and we need a, the separate method of counting those ballots, obviously. And, you know, what we quote unquote save on is, is we wouldn't need more police officers. We may or may not need more poll workers, depending on how our town clerk would have set up that election, although we currently don't have a town clerk, which, which would complicate the issue. And so having looked at all that and said all that, I am of the opinion that despite some people thinking, well, gee, there's, you know, a group of people in town who may be disenfranchised because the select board has four people out rather than five. It is my opinion that unless we run into a situation, or historically we've run, we haven't run into situations, we got a lot of two-to-two votes going on here, the town will run just fine and save the town many thousands of dollars. And I, I won't even speculate on whether it's three thousand or four thousand or ten thousand, somewhere varies in, in those dollars. But primarily, it's, you gotta print the ballots. And, you know, for people to say, well, just print two hundred and fifty ballots, you can't. I will say that my sister-in-law was part of an election, Marblehead this past July, they ran out of ballots. You don't ever wanna run out of ballots. And so you gotta print enough ballots. And not only that, but in our town, the way our system works, our ballots are precinct-specific. So you can't just go out and say, like, print me a thousand ballots, we'll never have a greater turnout than a thousand people. Because you need to print precinct A ballots and precinct B ballots and C and D and E, and they're not interchangeable. And so when you go to print ballots, you gotta print a whole bunch for each precinct. So our ballot printing costs, from what I've been told, is, is the primary cost. Not mention the fact, you gotta set the place up and program the ballot boxes and stuff like that. It's a lot of expense. I'm not saying we don't wanna fill, fill the seat, I think we, it'd be nice to fill the seat. But people need to also understand that if we were to hold this election, and my opinion, the earliest we could do is probably mid-November, because we can't do, we probably don't wanna do it the same day as the general election November eighth. That means we're electing somebody who'll run, who will serve from November to June because that position is vacant in June, even if it wasn't. You can only fill a position through a special election through the next town election. We can't run a, if you will, thirty-six plus six months, forty-two month election. You'd have to run, somebody would have to run for six months and then run again for three years. So for what it's worth, miss Steve when he's gone, and unless there's a compelling reason, and I will say that if we do get a petition with two hundred ballots, and in two thousand and eleven, we did get a petition, which was the reason we ran the election, the election was held in April and somebody served for six weeks. And, and, and we spent a lot of money to do that. And I'm, I'm hoping that we don't spend a lot of money, but if people feel strongly, please talk to us. And before you go run out and get a petition, we'll, we'll reconsider doing it on a, on an appropriate timetable and not on the required timetable, which may end us having an ele, which would potentially have an election on Christmas Day or something, something like that. So I've said my piece and I'll move on.
Tom?
Is there any chance we could do it in October?
You have this ninety-two day deal, I'm not sure if that was doable.
It'd be too late, be close?
It'd probably be like October thirty-first. August first to November eighth is exactly a hundred days.
Okay, all right, okay. Yeah, I, I don't think we should make a decision tonight, I'd like to hear from some of the constituents too, because it's, it's, you know, it's our decision, but it's also, we should hear from voters who could talk to us and say, yes, let's save the money, or we need to get a fifth person in there. Because it's hard, it's hard to predict if the voting's gonna be a lot of two-to-two, it's hard to predict.
No, I, I was just saying, I mean, the, the big issue is, you know, you know, I've run for a few elections, we all have now run for election. The issue is, is, well, if I think I can just get, go in there with no competition, I'll be glad to sit on the select board and put my name in. The problem is, if three people apply, now all of a sudden we got two elections because we have to have a preliminary election, and final election, all of a sudden our three thousand dollar cost or five thousand dollar cost doubles or triples, kinds of stuff to have that. And one can never predict who or how many people are gonna run for, run for election. And, and it's generally when, you know, no, you announce election, nobody takes out papers, everybody's waiting and waiting and waiting and, you know, and nobody's submitted papers. And then at the last minute, everyone says, gee, I can waltz in. And then all of a sudden on the last day, four people submit paperwork. Or a worst-case scenario, nobody submits your paperwork, now you have an election, and somebody's gonna write in Mickey Mouse three times and Mickey Mouse will get it, to the select board. Which, remember, if nobody, if you call an election, there's an election, even if nobody submits nominating papers. And that's part of the, the potential downside. I, I would hope that wouldn't happen, but the converse of that is, when somebody, when people see nobody submitting their paperwork, everybody's gonna say, well, heck, I can get fifty signatures tomorrow and then six people submit their paperwork and now we got to election.
I, I've thought a lot about this, my, and I, I agree with Mark for a number of reasons. The biggest, it's, we don't have a clerk. And it's adding on, we had an interim clerk, an assistant clerk, it's adding on a lot of responsibility right away and it's gonna cost us a lot of money. And having thought of the preliminary election, that would really be a shame, money that we don't necessarily need to spend. We don't, we're lucky enough, we don't have, we haven't had a lot of five or three-two votes. And I, I don't really envision a lot of two-two votes, if that, if it does. If that, if it does become an issue, you know, things can change, and like Mark said, if the town people want this to happen, they can, but it just, you got to think of the consequences. It's, there's a lot to it, it's a lot, it's not as easy as just calling the election. I remember when the school board had the preliminary election, I was talking to Kathy before, and she, the greatest fear of a town clerk is running out of ballots, and there's, there's just no way around that. And if we have to do it for two elections, that's, that's a big to-do. So I agree with Mark, or, sorry, Tom, I'd love to hear people come in if they think otherwise, but that's certainly my thinking. Mike?
I think Dan had his hand up.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I was just wondering, so, Mark, would you suggest that we would have the election in 2023? Is that?
We have to.
And then the annual town election, that's what it would be? It'd just be two, four?
Well, Mark? No, no, it turns out that in 2023, there's only one seat up for, for election, and that's that one.
That's right.
The one that's expired next year anyway. So it's a standard election in 2020. I mean, it's, it would be essentially vacant until June, whatever that date is.
Whoever wins is going to have to either run again six months later or, or not.
And we did that. Mark Barowski was on the select board for three months, or something like that.
And how much money are we talking for an election? Because I, I look back, Mark, at your comments from, I think, 2012, it was like $10,000, right?
You know, it, it depend, it depends on how many, how many poll workers you need to hire, you know, how many ballots you choose to or need to print, and what the cost of printing ballots are, and I'm sure that's gone up. And, and there's a police detail, and then I think we've also had somebody representing the, the, the voting machines, or somebody on standby, or pay some fee for making sure that if your voting machines have a problem, somebody can, can take care of them pretty quickly. So I, I can't tell you that it's 8,000, you know, it's a minimum of $3,000, it could be seven or eight or nine thousand, but that's just printing the ballots, I think. But, and, and at the last election, if you recall, Kathy was able to use fewer poll workers, and we saved a lot of money because we have the new system of checking in. We used to have two people at the front and two people at the back of every line. So we had, you know, four times, so we had 20 poll workers, you know, working, which means we had, must have 35 to give a break. That's a lot of people you got to hire for, for, for 13 hours of the day. You have to have a police officer, and you have to, you know, print ballots, so.
But we're also going to have an election in November. There's still an election, so.
Right, but, but our election, you know, to have a, a town election in conjunction with the statewide election would require separate ballots. Because the state ballots will have been, needed to be printed long before we can print ours, or we can add ours on to it, because of a potential preliminary election, because of our timing and people submitting paperwork. State ballots are going to be printed right after September, and ours can't be printed that soon.
Well, I, I had a long conversation with Kathy about this thing, because it seemed to me pretty, be nice just have it.
One more, one more line on the ballot, right?
And, and, no, it just, it's not doable. It's just, it's, it's a gigantic pain.
Yeah, so it's just a, it's a parallel election.
Yes.
Yeah, you got to hold two elections at once with two ballot boxes.
Anyone's voted in town, you see the four corrals.
Well, in our ballot boxes that, that read, they read the ballots, they're programmed for it, if you have a separate election, you need separate ballot boxes, I believe, to read the separate ballot.
Yes.
So literally, you need twice as many ballots.
Well, we also, like, we, we need permission from the state to have, it was, it was a real to do. It was not.
I know, it's just, it's just hard that we're actually having an election in November already, and there's going to be thousands of people showing up to vote. So it's just hard.
Seems like an obvious solution, but.
Welcome to town government.
Yeah. It's unfortunate, but.
Yeah. It's not impossible, it just comes at a great expense. It's not impossible. You could walk in and, and get a ballot for the November 8th election and choose not to vote in the local election, or you could just vote in the local election, but it's two elections running concurrently. We need extra poll workers, extra poll pads, extra machines that have to be programmed, extra ballots.
Different voter registration deadline?
Yep, different voter registration deadline. It's, it's running two elections at the same time. It's not impossible, it's just, there's an expense.
I just always think of it, if, if it's $10,000 that we didn't need to spend, that was somebody's or two people's property taxes that year. It just seems to me, if it's not necessary, I'd rather, I'd rather avoid it.
Yeah. Well, we would only have to take a vote if we wanted to have it. So we don't have to vote on it tonight, we just.
No.
So part of the reason this happens, and why we default to 41, Section 10, is because our charter is silent on a vacancy in an, in an elected office, or not, I'm sorry, not in planning or.
School committee.
Right. But select board, if there's a vacancy, it's, the charter is silent, so we default to general law.
So could we?
You could do a charter change.
Have somebody appoint, we could appoint somebody.
Or, or you could do something like whoever lost the last election, or came in, you know, like they do in some places, in Springfield, I think, city council, the next highest vote getter is appointed to Springfield City Council, I believe they do that kind of stuff. But we can't right now, because, I mean, you can't retroactively say, we'll go back to the last election.
Right. I was just going to mention before that, we were talking about timeframes, and also the kind of conflicts with the timeframe is the special town meeting, which is scheduled for October 25th, also kind of interferes with those timeframes as well. So we can't go back to the previous election to have the person?
No, no, it'd be against the state law.
Against.
There's also a lot of early voting that'll take place for the general election and, and the state primary, which may or may not be available for the local election, which will only complicate things for a very new staff that hopefully will be in place. Not a reason not to do it, it's just, these are things that run through my mind when I'm thinking about what some of the challenges will be. And, you know, the average person that comes in to vote doesn't quite understand all the intricacies of this, and may not understand why they can't get a ballot for the local election, or why they're going to be asked to have, if they want two ballots, that type of thing. It's, it's just a lot of staff training that goes into doing something like this.
Right. Really, right, there is a mechanism.
I'm just, I'm just, honestly, I'm just curious.
There's, there's a mechanism if town residents want to do this, but you've heard us speak at length about our feelings, or most of our feelings. Anything else from board? All right. EverSource Western Mass Natural Gas Pipeline update and MEPA filing. As we've discussed previously, the MEPA comments and questions are due July 28th. The select board has received a draft letter from our attorney for the town, and we have given our thoughts and on what we want to send to MEPA to have EverSource be required to address. And we're going to have a meeting next week to file that, or to finalize it and send it off to MEPA. What we have learned from our attorney is MEPA, everyone who asks a question, doesn't matter who it is, we're going to do it, anyone in town can do it, anyone from Springfield can ask questions, it will be compiled by MEPA and sent to EverSource, and EverSource then is required to respond. So pointed questions, I think, are very good and useful. And then there is a process where if the questions aren't adequately covered by EverSource, there's a chance to ask for clarification or continue pushing the issue. So again, that's Thursday 18th, there's 10 days to do that. It becomes, when you send your letter, it will become a public record, same will happen with our letter, and it behooves anyone who wants to put pressure on EverSource to, to make your voice heard. Did I miss anything? Anybody have more updates or want to comment on that? Lynn? Okay. Yeah, so July 28th, that's our, our deadline for MEPA. We will then continue on with the EFSB procedure. That, I'm trying to remember what I said two weeks ago. That has been started, but that is kind of in a holding pattern right now. So we will, there will be more information forthcoming when EFSB comes through, but that's more like a, almost like an evidentiary hearing with expert witnesses and the like. So, but right now, that's in a, in a holding pattern, so we're going to, we can focus on MEPA. Okay?
I just asked a question. Lynn, how much money have we got budgeted for this effort, and how much have we spent? Do you have that? Can you cap it for us at by?
I can have it for the next meeting.
Yeah, okay, I know it's a lot to ask right now. That's great, thanks.
Wasn't it a total legal budget? It was a total number, I suppose, I'm not sure we said, because we have obviously a variety of legal bills that the town.
Right. But I think, I thought that conceptually, we said, we're going to spend so much money on, on, you know, contract attorneys and so much on our, you know, because I think we separated out contract and, and this and, and the DPW legal action from what I'll say is our standard town legal.
Right, so we have a, a contract for general legal services for, which is Jesse from Dordie Wallace, and then we have a separate one for labor council, which is Gordon Quinn from Sullivan Hayes and Quinn. And then what we've been using for the gas matters has been the money that was allocated at the fall town meeting last October. So I'll give you a full rundown on that. But we generally do not pay for any gas or DPW-related work out of our general or labor council contract money.
Yeah, good, thanks. Okay, and so the fall town meeting, we will, will there be an agenda item, or do we need to allocate more money at that point?
We'll have to discuss that, once, once we look at where we are right now with the budget and where legal counsel advises that we might be come maybe November, we might need money. That would be our last chance before the annual town meeting. It'll depend on what the EFSB timing is on everything, and when, when the board would decide if you wanted to pursue additional intervenor petitions and that. Is that clear? I feel like it might not be clear.
All right. Anything else from the board on that? Fiscal year 2022 audit engagement letter.
I'll make a motion that we authorize the chair of the select board to sign a letter to engage Melanson CPAs for, is it our independent auditor contract, to perform the fiscal year 2022 audit for the town of Longmount.
I'll second the motion.
All right, any discussion? Are all of us in favor? And I have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, any, second?
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
Tom?
No, no.
All of us in favor?
In favor.
All right, thank you, everyone.